Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Jim Williams is the pastor at Lakeview Park Church of the Nazarene. He'll lead us in the invocation. I've also asked Pastor Williams if he would mention the community of Orlando and all they're going through this morning as he makes his comments. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Griner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Father, we're grateful today that you are the giver of every good and perfect gift. You said in your word that this is the day that you've created. Today, Lord, we rejoice in you. Lord, we love this state. It's a good and perfect gift to us. We love this city, Lord. And, Lord, today we're grateful for our leaders. We're grateful for Mayor Cornet and for the council. Lord, I pray today that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them guidance, that you would give them strength today. And, Lord, today especially, our hearts go out to those who have lost family, friends in Orlando, those who have been wounded. Lord, this is a great tragedy. And, Lord, today we depend on you. We depend on your spirit for the comfort that each family needs, that our nation needs. God, we pray for peace. We pray for comfort. We pray, God, that your presence would permeate every mile, square mile, of this great country. Again, Lord, today we're grateful for our leaders. Bless them today. Protect them. Bless their families, we pray, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us honor one of our employees as the employee of the month. And you can imagine, in a city of over 4,000 employees, when you are singled out, that is quite an extraordinary accomplishment and honor. And this morning, we are honoring Jane Ward in the Development Services Department. Jane, would you come forward? Let's show our appreciation to our employee of the month. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Jane Ward has been a city employee for 25 years and is the Construction Services Superintendent for the Development Services Department. Whereas Jane Ward supervises the Construction Services Section, which includes all construction, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, building, elevator, and zoning inspectors. Jane Ward has recently taken on a task of Superintendent of Construction Inspections and has done a tremendous job managing her section. Jane is professional and is an excellent listener. She is an effective team builder and leader. Whereas Jane Ward, since taking on her new role, has decreased the completion time of inspections, achieving same-day completion for 90 percent of the jobs. Whereas Jane is always fair but firm in her management approach. Employing a participative management style, she has succeeded in making the Construction Inspection Section a team. Whereas Jane is always positive and upbeat. She is a hard worker and spends many evenings and weekend hours at her desk, working to ensure that her tasks are completed in a timely and proficient manner. Whereas this council desires to recognize Jane Ward for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jane Ward, June 2016, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation for this outstanding employee. To make it official, you're going to need a majority of the council to support this resolution. So is there a motion? And a second? Cast your votes. How about that? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council and City Manager. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to, well, I won't say a name, but his initials are Jerry King, who put me up to this. But it's nice to be recognized and I appreciate my boss, David Adcock, and also Rick Wickencamp and Bob Teener, and all the support I get from Carol Reed, too. I think we've done a lot at our section over in Construction Inspections, and it has turned around quite a bit. Mayor and I were discussing that just a second ago, how things have turned around. And we have a good team of inspectors over there, and that's what it takes. So I appreciate this time and the attention, and thank you very much for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
You're welcome. We thank you, and thanks very much. Let's show our appreciation. Thanks, Jane. Congratulations. All right, we're on Item 3B and C of the council agenda, a couple of appointments. I'll look for a motion.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for May 31st and June 7th, and 4B is to approve the journal for May 17th and 24th.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple this morning. First of all, on page 11, on the consent docket, Item 6W2, we'd ask that that be stricken. With a 34-page agenda, we actually made an error on an item, so we're going to strike this and bring this back next week. Moving to page 28, under Items 9I1, Item C, 1129 Linwood Boulevard, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item J, 5901 Steeple Run Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item L, 1121 Northeast Sixth Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item T, 2828 Northwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item U, 610 Southwest 27th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item Z, 1516 Southwest 35th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And Item A8, I'm going to page 29, Item AH, 7801 Northwest 94th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to Item 9J1, still on page 29, Item D, 1129 Linwood Boulevard, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item G, 5901 Steeple Run Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item N, 610 Southwest 27th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item T, 1516 Southwest 35th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And finally, Item U, 7801 Northwest 94th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we have revocable permits. Our first is a request from Market Space LLC to hold the OKC Night Bazaar. Is there anyone here representing this event? All right, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Brian G., and my address is 925 Northwest 22nd Street.
All right, tell us about the OKC Night Bazaar.
Okay, it's a food-centric event that will be hosted at the Farmers Market District on June 18th, this Saturday, and the event's from 6:00 PM to midnight. It is a pedestrian-friendly event. We'll be closing off the streets, and there'll be food, food vendors like pop-up restaurants, live entertainment, pop-up shops, and art.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
This Saturday night?
Yeah, this Saturday.
At the Farmers Market?
District.
On South Klein. Sounds good. It's in Ward 6. Meg, you okay with this?
Yeah, I am. It's really exciting. This is a first-time event. Brian's been involved in some similar concepts in California.
Correct.
And a little bit like, you know, there are night markets all around the world and hoping to bring that concept to Oklahoma City, so.
Absolutely.
Congratulations. I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
Item 6B is a request from the Oklahoma Baptist Homes for Children to hold the Miles for Smiles. This event also scheduled for Saturday. Is there anyone here representing that event? Yeah. We'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm Scott Conrad, 16301 South Western Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Yeah, Scott, tell us about Miles for Smiles.
It's our 16th annual bike ride. We have about 500 bike riders that come out. We don't close any streets. Ask them to obey all street laws. And so it usually starts at 7:00, wraps up about 2:00 PM.
All right. How many miles are they going?
We have one that's 56. It's the farthest ride.
Wow.
I volunteered David for that one.
All right, right. It says Words 4 and 5. Is that how you're going to get 56 miles and stay in Words 4 and 5 unless you do a lot of laps?
That's right. We go all over.
All right. How about the representation from 4 and 5 making a motion here?
Actually, you could get 56 miles in Ward 4 just driving from here to my house and back.
Now that I think about it, you're absolutely right.
Thank you. I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks for what you do. Our final request for a revocable permit is from Slide the City, which is holding an event by that same name in Ward 6. Is anyone here representing this event? All right, Meg, you know about this one?
I do. This is the second year for this event, and it really is kind of fun. They set up a gigantic, I think it's 1,000-foot-long slide and run water on it, and that location on Fifth and Chertel has a great hill. And they had music and all sorts of stuff last year. Tons of people came out. I'd move approval.
All right, it's July 30th and 31st, North Chertel Avenue between Fifth Street and Ninth Street, a giant slide. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Over Sessa Council Meeting, convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Long list of items today. Is there a motion on the MFA? All right, comments or questions on any of these items? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Will adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Is there a motion? Yeah, we have a motion in a second. We'll accept that on Item A. We need to strike Item B, and we'll bring it back at some point in the future. Any comments on Item A of the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Will adjourn the OC PPA?
C.
Oh, claims and payroll. In my scribbling here, I crossed that out. Why don't we have a motion then to make it official on the claims and payroll of the PPA? A motion there on Item C.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, now we'll adjourn the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket? All right, are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, I just, I wanted to mention AV if I could.
Which one, Meg?
AV.
AB, all right.
As in Victor.
All right, Larry?
Item Z and Item AT.
Z and AG?
T, AT.
AT, okay. All right, and Item W2 was struck from the agenda earlier. Meg, why don't you go ahead and talk about AB?
Sure, I was wondering if Gary Cox was here. I don't see him, from City County Health Department. But this is a resolution authorizing, you actually did sign a letter allowing us to submit a grant application for something called My Health Access Network. And it's a joint venture between Oklahoma City and Tulsa. I understand, and I just, I know that some of the other agencies around the city were interested in this as well. I think Variety Care and the United Way were contemplating an application. It's very competitive, and only one entity could apply. And I just wanted to be certain that we are collaborating carefully with all of those other entities. This is a really important opportunity, I think, to, you know, identify citywide and statewide health-related social service needs. But I just want to be sure that at the city-county health level, we really are collaborating.
Okay, would you like, you can have Gary Cox give you a call. Would you like that?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Just want to, thank you.
Can you take care of that? All right. And Larry, Item Z?
Yes, Item Z and AT. I've asked Eric to come forward as Public Works Director and give our viewers a brief overview of these two projects. They're projects that the neighborhoods have been interested in or the citizens have been interested in. One of them goes between MacArthur and Rockwell and Northwest 10th and Northwest 16th, and the other runs on Reno from Check Hall out to Cemetery Road. So Eric, if you would, please, sir?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Councilman. We do have a 2007 bond-issue resurfacing project, and so this is predominantly residential resurfacing in the area from 10th to 23rd, Rockwell to MacArthur. It does border up to the next to the city of Bethany, so it does continue a lot of the work that's in the ward. Sidewalks are included with a project everywhere that there is curb and gutter, but this is also a location where you have a lot of streets that do not have the traditional curb and gutter. And unfortunately, we're not able to accommodate the sidewalks in those areas just due to engineering challenges. But the contractor will be working very closely with the homeowners, as will our Field Services Division. So as work proceeds in the area, they'll be putting up door hangers. So as the street is getting ready for resurfacing, you'll get a notice, and there'll be some contact info on that as well. So if there are questions, please look at the information on that door hanger. Work is expected to begin here in just the next month, and it'll be finished up in the spring of 2017.
Thank you, Senator. How about the one on Reno?
I believe the work is real similar. It's work that's just getting ready to begin, and so, again, additional construction can be anticipated in just the next month or so and proceeding from there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And Item AT, Larry?
That is AT.
Oh, okay. Have you already mentioned both of your items then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote the consent docket. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Honor the concurrence docket. All right, any individual considerations on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And that brings us along to Item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 2. The address is 715 Northwest 23rd Street. Ed?
I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on Item 9A1. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1701 South Western Avenue. It's currently I-1 light industrial and has a series of uses, and it would all be turned into a new simplified plan unit development and a PUD if approved. Meg?
Yeah, this is an important step forward. I know that everybody's seen and lots of chat about the Ferris wheel down in the Wheeler District. It looks fantastic. The OKC sign is up. The buckets are on the Ferris wheel. I think the timing is it will be open before the Fourth of July, so very exciting. And this is the PUD application. I know it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. There were no protests, and I would move approval.
All right, comments or questions on Item 9A2? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 10030 Broadway Extension. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become a new PUD if approved.
I know that John has reviewed this and asked that, again, there were no protests at the Planning Commission, and I move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Anyone here show up today hoping to speak on Item 9A3? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 1235 Northwest 38th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would be put into a new PUD if approved.
Anybody sign up to speak? This is a boutique hotel on 38th and Classen. Great project. Move for approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes on 9A4. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is an amendment to the master design statement. So the Planning Commission added this amendment for council's consideration. Jim, you want to explain the amendment before we vote on the zoning change?
Bob's going to explain it.
Okay.
This is a situation where there was a change to delete non-accessory signs, and when we submit the document for introduction, that amendment wasn't in the document, so it's been added, but it'd take two votes to add that into the document.
Okay.
It wasn't a controversial issue. They just didn't have it in the original documents when we introduced it.
All right.
That's how we're really doing it.
It's in Ward 4. Pete, you want to provide some direction?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
Does the motion have to be separate on the amendment?
Yes, it does. Motion on the amendment.
I move the amendment then first.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Item 9A, I'm sorry, 9B1. This is the amendment. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Yeah, I'd move 2.
All right, we have a motion and a second on 9B2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C is a street closure in Ward 7. Did anyone show up today to speak to this item on Northeast 100th Street? If you'd like to come forward, you can. I think it'll probably go through if you're on the side of allowing it to be closed. Okay, how about a motion then to approve 9C?
I would move. I know that John's in favor of this.
All right, anyone here showed us up to speak against this item? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is here for final hearing today. You may remember about a month ago, Eric Winger introduced two items to us, and this is the first of the two. This has to do with the room rental adjustment fee added at our facility in southwest Oklahoma City. Does anyone here show up today hoping to speak on Item 9D? All right, how about a motion here?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is the second half of the items that Eric introduced from Public Works, and this would add the administration fee on the sidewalk repair. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on Item 9E? All right, Item 9E also up for final hearing, and cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F deals with the Capitol Hill bid. Item 9F is to confirm the assessment role. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on this item, Item 9F? All right, how about a motion then to adopt and confirm the assessment role?
I would like to compliment Donna on the good job she's done. She took over after the resignation of the previous director of Capitol Hill, of the business district and of the Main Street program there, and she has really done a great job. I could not be more pleased with the progress that we've made, and I appreciate it. Kim has done a good job. I see a school board member here who's also very active on 25th Street, and I appreciate all the hard work that they've all put in to make this, keep this moving forward. It's a difficult situation there, and a lot of good, hard work has been put in, and more recently, I think, than since some in the past. So I'm very pleased, and I'm happy to move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I drove down 25th Street over the weekend. A lot of new construction taking place there. It's really good to see. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then Item 9G is a companion item. This would be for the ordinance to adopt and set the assessment role for the bid.
Yeah, I would move the ordinance.
Into motion. All right, cast your votes on 9G, and it passes unanimously. Thank you all. All right, Item 9H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here who hopes to speak on any of the items listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Do we need to vote separately on 9H2? Okay, so we're on to Item 9I. It's a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. All right, is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items listed under 9I? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9J? All right, how about a motion here? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9K is a public hearing regarding removal of properties from the abandoned buildings list. We have four properties listed. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on these items? All right, how about a motion on 9K? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9L is a public hearing, and Jim, you want to give us more information?
Yeah, these are the annual resolutions we do for police and fire, as with the dedicated public safety sales tax. And Doug Dollar here is here this morning to give more details.
Yeah. As Mr. Couch said, these are annual expressions of how the city intends to spend the fire and police sales tax funds in the coming year. These resolutions are required under the general entry of judgment that was entered into in 1993 to make sure all the expenditures from the sales tax fund are consistent with the ballot language that was approved in 1989. The ballot contained a list of specific projects, as well as the ability to add other projects that provide new, additional, increased or improved services or facilities. And you'll see that the first two projects for both police and fire are listed projects, while the remaining projects are considered other projects. And you'll note that Projects A and B, those first two for police and fire, were listed on the ballot. Those amounts are listed as estimated, while the amounts for the other projects are stated as not to exceed amounts. And that distinction comes about from the legal interpretation that the expenses for listed projects do not have the same limits since they were approved by the voters. For other projects, however, the amounts approved by the city council are a maximum. If more funding is needed, an amended resolution will have to be brought back to council to approve that. At the end of each year, the city auditor's office reviews all the expenditures from the fire and police sales tax funds, ensures that they were all made in conformance with the resolution that you all are about to pass for the coming year, that there were no, any exceptions would then be reported. any exceptions would then be reported out and noted. That report is presented to council each year around December, about the same time as the comprehensive annual financial report is presented. For the fire resolutions for FY17, two projects that were on the list for FY16 are gone as they were completed in the current year. The upgrade for the fuel management system and the study of the fire system needs... or fire station needs are both complete, and so are no longer included in the resolution. The resolution for fire authorizes 208 uniform firefighter positions and six civilian positions for a total of 214 positions funded by the fire sales tax fund. There's also funding for recruit overage positions so that recruit academies can begin in advance of expected retirements, allowing vacancies to be filled more quickly. The fire compensation project is what we refer to as the wage adjustment. One component of the police and fire sales tax was to pay for higher salaries and benefits. The specifics of how that payment is calculated are spelled out in the general entry of judgment. The change in the amount each year is driven by the growth in sales tax. So, since sales tax decreased in the current year, the wage adjustment will also decrease in the coming year. Other projects include firefighting tools and equipment, advanced life support, a wellness project, computer upgrades, fire facility repairs, and funding to supplement the bond fund remodels of two fire stations. The total budget for the fire sales tax fund for FY17 is $44.1 million, and all expenditures in the fund must conform to the resolution you have before you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the fire resolution. I can talk about the police resolution, or I can wait till after the fire is passed, whichever you prefer.
Why don't you go ahead and explain item M as well?
Yeah. With the police projects, all of the projects that are listed there are the same as in the current year. It funds 219 uniformed police officers and 31 civilians for a total of 250 positions. In police, there's also funding for recruit overages, similar to fire, so that recruit academies can begin in advance of the full number of openings. Other projects include maintenance for police vehicles, the police compensation or wage adjustment project, capital improvements at police facilities and supplies and equipment. And the total budget for the police sales tax fund is $49.3 million, and all expenditures in the fund, again, must conform with the resolution that you have before you. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Doug. And this is a public hearing item being introduced today, and we'll have a second hearing on June 21st. Any questions from the council today? We'll have a couple more times to review this. But this is how we're spending the three-quarter cent of public safety sales tax in the upcoming fiscal year. Doug, thanks. All right. Is there a motion to move item 9L forward? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9M on the police side of the issue. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item N is the budget, and it's a very small part of the agenda considering all that it entails. But I will note this. This year's budget is $1.28 billion, and the general fund portion is $414 million. We have a public hearing scheduled today. If anybody'd like to speak on the budget, now's a good time. All right. How about a motion then to approve the budget?
Move approval. And I have a comment before we vote.
Okay.
You know, we do this in such an open, almost matter-of-fact way. We've gone through a series of budget hearings. All of them been open to the public. All of them have been on television. The public has been invited every time. It's been covered in the newspaper. I just want to contrast that to the turmoil that we saw at 23rd and Lincoln this last year. They could take some lessons from the way we do it. That the idea that they talk about transparency... transparency would be doing it all in public the way we do. If you've got to complain about it, you have an opportunity to come and address the people that are going to vote on it. And I think that come November, all of us ought to remember that, that they have the opportunity to do it the very same way. They don't have laws that say it all has to be done behind closed doors. They don't have rules that say it all waits for the last minute to be done. They could... We have tentatively approved the budgets for each of the departments of the city as they came before us. We didn't take a vote that said we approved it, but they made presentations. We asked questions. There were minor changes along the way, but it was all done in public. It was all done in the most transparent way that I know how to do it, and I think that we know how to do it. I think the reason there's no one here today protesting it is because people recognize what we've done, that we do it in public, and they have a voice in it. They have people they can call that will respond to them. I just want to be sure that gets pointed out today. It doesn't just go that we just read... You know, when we realized we had a shortfall, we'd been planning for the possibility of a shortfall by putting money back. We do it every year, like North Dakota did. When they had the great oil boom, they put money back. They didn't wait. And, you know, the situation at the legislature reminds me of a client I had one time who couldn't make his house payment, so he quit his job. You know, that's the analogy of what happened at the legislature. So, I just want people to recognize that the energy that was put into this and why it's as smooth today as it is, I think. I may be... That may be wishful thinking. I mean, it may be that I was right that when my mother-in-law passed away, she was the last one to watch this television program, but I don't think so. I think the public realizes that we do this in public, that we don't do it behind closed doors. That if you want a voice, we have a gentleman here that exercises that right almost every week. And he gets the opportunity to say what he thinks. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to do exactly what he says, but he has the opportunity to be here. The door's open every Tuesday. And I think that's the way... I just want to... I just want to point that out. I think it's important that the public recognize that.
All right.
Here, I was just going to make a quick comment to sort of follow on to Pete. I think the presentations that we had during the finance committee meetings from all the departments were so excellently done. It did provide us an opportunity to ask lots of questions, but we knew, you know, nine months ago that we were going to face a difficult budget situation. And staff took control of that issue. You know, there are lots of things that are out of our control. But the things that we can control, we've addressed. You know, it's a little bit lower budget than it was last year. We wish we had more. We need more money in transit, and we desperately need more money in social services are the two things that, you know, I'd love to see happen. But we recognize that this is not a year in which we're going to be able to expand programming, probably. But the staff has just done a fantastic job, and it makes our decision when it comes to today much easier.
I echo Megan. Pete, I did have one last question. The reserve fund. Do you know off the top of your head where... how much is in there? And is the $8 million still... $8 million still with the reserve fund?
Yeah. Doug gave one of those numbers just a week and a half ago. We were at 14-plus percent. Whereas where we ended with the $8 million out, we're going to be 12.7%, 12.8%? Somewhere on reserve.
So, is the $8 million still in limbo? Or is it... Is it...
We voted to go forward with it. We reviewed it and chose not to take any action. And quite frankly, at this point in time, the price of oil is both up, and the reserves are actually up a little bit from when we made the decision a number of months ago. So, right now, staff is under the direction of going forward with $8 million.
Of spending it?
Yes.
Ready to vote? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Jim, thanks to your staff for all the work that goes into that budget.
Thank you for the time you all put in.
Item 9O is a workers' comp issue. Understand, we do not need executive session on this item, so a motion to approve the resolution will be in order? Okay. Cast your votes on approving 9O. It passes unanimously. Item 9P. Understand, we do need executive session on this item. So, how about a motion to move 9P to executive session? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9Q, we also need to go into executive session. So, how about a motion to move that to executive session? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9R is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the items listed under 9R? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right. How about a motion then? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. And our first is a resolution that would describe the compensation and benefits of the municipal judge, the presiding judge, and the vice-presiding judge. And this would take place on July 1st. Pete, you want to discuss some of the work that you and the Judiciary Committee has done in this area?
Because the judges are on contracts, it is always with some difficulty that we have to try to adjust their contracts, make sure they make the same, and make sure they get raises that are equal to those that we give the other employees when we give raises. And this is just a reflection of that. It just... It makes sure they all stay at the same pay rate.
Okay. It'll take a series of votes to get this accomplished. Pete, you want to make the motions on 9A?
I'd move approval of 9A.
Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Pete, you want to make a motion on 9B?
Yes. That's just reappointing Judge Austin as a municipal judge. I'd move approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C?
That's reappointing Judge Kiffin as a municipal judge. I'd move approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D?
That is appointing... That is appointing Judge Austin as the... For a while, we rotated the vice-presiding judge and decided that wasn't really a good, long-term idea. And so, we're appointing Judge Austin as... for this term as the vice-presiding judge.
All right. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9E is our special judges.
Yeah. It's just reappointing a list and adding some new ones, taking off some ones that had no longer wanted to serve as special judges. I'd move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9F is a resolution that would establish some policy goals. I think Cindy Richard is here. It's going to kind of explain what these new policy goals would be from the Judiciary Committee.
Before Cindy starts, I want to tell you that these policies are the result of a lot, a lot of work, especially by Cindy and Judge James. They both... And most recently, by our new court administrator. So, this is a result of a lot of work, and we think that they are something that the city can be proud of when we're compared to other cities in the country about how we handle indigency. And I want to personally thank the staff and Judge James for all the hard work that went into this. And I think you'll be interested to see what the policy is and how we arrived at it.
Yeah. I'd like to echo Pete's comments. Staff did an outstanding job. We've seen this presentation, and there was a lot of hard work put into it. There was a lot of thought given into the policy decisions that we need to make and need to stand by. And I'm very proud of our staff's work on this project. Thank you.
Mayor and council, Cindy Richard from the municipal councilor's office. I was asked to discuss the policy goals and to present a PowerPoint presentation that I presented to the Judiciary Committee the last time it met. I think that Councilman Wyden Stone probably forgot we were at that meeting for well over an hour. So, I have massively condensed this PowerPoint so we won't be here that long today. There is no doubt that we have made significant progress There is no doubt that we have made significant progress in the last 10 years in the way that our municipal court operates. We are one of two courts of record in the state of Oklahoma, which means essentially that appeals from our court go straight to the Court of Criminal Appeals rather than to the District Court of Oklahoma County. We average, in the last couple of years, about 150,000 citations a year. So anything we do that's a change is certainly turning a big ship, and it requires a lot of people to make that happen. We've made some changes and some progress. We're not perfect yet, and we need to make some more changes. So rather than focus on all the things we've done in the past, and I had about 21 bullet points of things we've done, I've condensed that. Wait if you could help me out there. Essentially, the things we've done in the past have focused on these four issues, which are about making determinations about the financial ability to pay. We can't be putting people in jail just because they're poor. And so we've made strides in that, and we're going to make some more strides. Getting defendants who only owe money to our court, in other words, they've appeared for their case, but they only owe money. We want to get them in front of a judge rather than taking them to jail. So those are some things that we've worked on and continue to. Reducing the circumstances in which we have to issue warrants for defendants. And reducing the amount of time that defendants spend in jail. Those have been significant things and will be going forward also. And the court, the municipal court through the court administrator, has made significant strides on the availability of court services to defendants. LaShawn Thompson has been pushing us to revamp pamphlets that police officers hand out with tickets, so there'll be a greater understanding by the defendant of what the process is. We've created a pamphlet for people that want to go to trial. We can't give them legal advice, but we can certainly inform them about the process that they'll be entering. So those are the kinds of things that we've worked at. And thanks to the leadership of the Judiciary Committee and the leadership of the presiding judge, Philippa James, we've been able to do quite a bit. We are now making a significant push forward, though, and that's what I'd really like to focus on. What you're going to hear about will align with the policy goals that we're asking counsel to approve today. The things that we're specifically looking at are indigency hearings, that's about making those financial determinations about defendants. We've had a lot, there's a phrase that just became, you knew it as well as your name, it's called "time pay." And we're moving away from what we call "time pay" because that was a workaround. When we weren't having indigency hearings, we were just telling defendants, "Come back in a month, come back in two months, bring some money." And that doesn't meet the requirements of the law in Oklahoma. So we're moving away from that traditional "time pay," and we're moving toward indigency hearings in a formalized process. Jail arraignments. You're going to see that the average defendant in our jail spends about a week in jail. That's problematic because you generally don't get sentenced to a week in our jail for any of your crimes. Those are primarily pre-trial detentions. So people are in there because they failed to show up to court, and they can't post a bond, and so they're sitting there waiting. And they'll wait until they can get back on the docket that they didn't appear on before. So we're going to cut the legs out from under that process. And I'm going to tell you how we're going to do it as I get there. Marshal assists on EX warrants and marshal assists on all city warrants. Essentially, marshal assists are when the marshals go out to meet the police officer who has stopped somebody, and there's a city warrant. So the marshal goes out, so the police officer can be freed back up to go out into the field, and the marshal takes care of dealing with that defendant. And that usually means taking them to jail and sitting there for quite a while. We're going to do a different thing going forward, and I'm going to tell you about that. We're in the beginning stages of talking about the police department being able to transfer defendants to marshals on new city arrests, not old city warrants. The possibility of evening court, which is just in the early discussion phases, because that would take significant transitions. And then disposing of cases at the clerk's counter rather than defendants having to come into court. So, wait if you'd...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What are some examples of charges for which people have been staying in jail for a week, waiting for?
Could be any of our charges. It could be anything from traffic offenses to assault and battery, drunk driving, things like that. But generally, it's because they failed to show up for court on those, so they were picked up on a warrant.
So any charge, they could be in there for a week?
Yes. As I said, this is about moving a big ship, so we had to bring a lot of people together to begin to address these issues. We had two Friday workshops, a total of 12 hours. And the attendees included the municipal judges, the city auditor, the police department, the IT department, the public defender that we contract with through Legal Aid, the prosecutors, the police legal advisor. And the court administrator had representatives from every division in her office. So we sat, and we discussed, and we brainstormed, and we came up with some workable conclusions. We made great strides in the last few weeks, and I'm going to tell you about the implementation dates. So we've already drafted new forms for the indigency hearing dockets that will formalize the process. And now, when a defendant comes into court and says, "I really want to take care of my ticket, but I don't have enough money to pay today," they'll be handed a packet of paperwork that will include these things, and they'll be set for an indigency hearing date. They may be able to pay before that hearing date, and if they can pay their ticket, they don't have to come back for any further proceedings. But if they can't pay, we've got them scheduled for the right docket to make a determination about whether they will be able to pay in the future, whether we don't think there's any time in the near future that they're going to have the ability to pay, or whether we think they can pay today. And when I say "we," that's, it's entirely up to the judges in their discretion.
Cindy, could I just ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we creating this paperwork in Spanish as well?
In the new electronic citation system and the court database, we just found out that that contractor, for a relatively small price, will translate a lot of our information to Spanish, in fact, to a number of languages. So we absolutely are pursuing that, and we'll see if there are any gaps that we need to fill after that.
I was thinking about the paperwork you said that people would take away with them.
Yes.
That might also be helpful, and I appreciate you saying more than Spanish, because we do have multiple languages spoken in this community that are...
And we also know that people will take these documents home and not fill them out. So the court administrator is planning on having a person devoted to going to these indigency hearing dockets and helping people get their paperwork filled out. We're scheduling, I believe it's eight new dockets per week just for indigency hearings. You know, we'll see if we're overestimating or underestimating. You know, we just have to step out there and do it. When I say "regular judges," I mean not the special judges, but the regular judges have met, and we want to be consistent from judge to judge and court to court on these indigency decisions. And so they've agreed on some primary issues to look at, which are the federal poverty guidelines, SNAP benefits, and the number of defendants in the home. Of course, it's always about the totality of circumstances, and that's why indigency hearings are important. There is no set formula to make decisions about a defendant's ability to pay. But those are some general areas that they've agreed upon. I talked about the packet of paperwork they'll get. And we have a target date for August 15th to have these eight new dockets set up every week and manned with a judge and with a court clerk. And I believe all the forms have gone to print. We're close to it, but we'll be ready by August 15th. Any questions about the indigency hearings?
I'll just say it's a great series of steps forward. Thank you for all the work you're putting into it.
Thank you, Mayor.
The Judiciary Committee's been working hard on it, too. Pete, thanks for your direction and leadership. Any other comments or questions on these items?
I think the great thing about this is that this will help get our police back out patrolling the streets instead of spending hours and hours putting people into jail just because they missed a payment. And it's, we've been doing the same thing for years and years, and finally, someone took a look at this, many people took a look at this, and came up with a fresh, new idea. And so once again, I commend staff.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Are there comments? Is there anything about Pete?
Your mic.
About the relative collection rates, I think you showed us that at the last Judiciary Committee meeting about how the collection system, how the old system put people in jail and collected X number of dollars and cost us X amount, and the new system doesn't put as many people in jail and collects a whole lot more money than the other one did.
Well, the city auditor actually did an audit and compared what we talked about, the marshal assist program. The marshals are bringing people that only owe money into the courthouse rather than to jail as often as they can. The auditor compared the statistics from the marshal assist program, where they saw a judge, maybe were given that time to pay, which we'll be calling a payment plan if that's the decision. Some of them had their costs and fines suspended against the people who were actually in jail and came up in jail arraignments and what happened with those folks. And what they found is that the numbers were fairly comparable or better on the marshal assist as far as recidivism, coming back into jail because they, you know, failed to take care of business, and as far as the percentage amount collected actually on the fines, came out better when we kept them out of jail. So they did that study, I think it was about a nine-month period when we had the marshal assist program up and fully functioning. And we want to have it fully functioning. Some of the things we need to wait for the new court building, which should be, I think, in March of 2017, there'll be things we can do with that new facility that we can't currently do. So we're looking forward to really good statistics going forward.
I just cannot say enough about what Judge James has done. This, all this started, she's been a municipal judge for quite some time, and for a long time, when she was a municipal judge, she agitated for this. Since she became the chief judge, she has advocated for it and made the change. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the personal courage and the stick-to-itiveness that you've exhibited to get this done. When, you know, the Department of Justice recently, well, not recently now, but some time back issued a statement with regard, after the Ferguson, and we had implemented a number of minor changes prior to that, and we felt relatively comfortable how we came out in the comparison between other cities. This is a giant leap forward, though. This is a, this really puts us on the forefront of, you know, they, I don't know when it was, about 1820 or 1830, they stopped having debtors' prisons. Well, you know, in effect, they've returned over the past several years in municipal court because of this very thing, this idea that if you can't pay, you have to go to jail. The best illustration I can give you of what Judge James has done, there used to be a stamp that all the judges had, and when they got worn out with the defendant not paying, they stamped, they had this stamp, and it said, "Pay or remand." And they stamped, "File Pay or Remand." That meant the guy had to have the money right there, or they remanded him to jail. One of the first things she did is went around and picked up all those stamps. They don't exist in the courthouse anymore. There's none of, well, there may be a souvenir up on the wall somewhere, but she did that. I mean, and that's just, I can't say enough about the courage and the stamina that it took to make these changes, and I'm very, very proud to be part of it and thank Mark for all the hard work he's put in recently to try to move this forward.
Look forward to coming back in maybe about a year and having new statistics from the auditor and tell you how all these programs are working out.
We had some very early statistics from a year ago that showed we reduced our payment to the jail by about $400,000 based on the early implementation.
We're now about to, I believe, with the newest jail contract that just went through, about a million and a half in savings.
Right. I mean, so that in and of itself is worth doing. If it's not enough, just do it because it's the right thing to do. A million and a half makes it a lot sweeter, doesn't it?
All right, Pete, you want to make a motion then on 9F?
Item...
All right, we're voting on item 9F. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G would pay for Councilman Pettis to attend the National League of Cities National Black Caucus of Elected Officials this summer. Is there a motion here to approve?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. John, thanks for your participation in that worthwhile effort. And we're still on council comments, so Mark, you have anything for us?
Just briefly, I did fail to mention Judge James and all the hard work she's done, and she was a tremendous asset in this project, and I'm sorry for that oversight. Last Friday on June 10th, I attended the Bluff Creek Park ribbon-cutting ceremony for the fourth conservation garden that's been built. We have one at the myriad gardens, one at OKC OSU campus, the OKC Zoo, and now Bluff Creek, which is in Ward 8. This is a wonderful idea in that we are looking at plants that are water-friendly. And if you have not looked at it, there is a wonderful website called squeezeeverydrop.com that tells us about these plants that are indigenous to Oklahoma and that make sense for your landscaping. And I was asked to mention that at Bluff Creek this Friday, June 17th, there will be picnic and plant talk. And in that talk, they will be discussing these plants that are goods for your landscaping in your backyards and make your backyards much, much more beautiful. So if you can attend, it's June 17th, 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 at the Bluff Creek Park. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mark. John? All right, Meg?
I guess just congratulations to Red Earth and Dead Center Film Festival. Oklahoma City was absolutely abuzz this weekend. It was impossible to choose how many things to do. Movies in the myriad gardens, it was just a fantastic, exciting weekend, and I think Dead Center really did a fantastic job.
It was a great weekend. David? All right. Pete, anything else? All right, Larry?
A couple of things real quick, Mayor. I'd like to thank the neighbors at the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association for the effort that they put forward this past weekend, having a picnic out at Harwell Park. My wife and I thoroughly enjoyed being there, so thank you for that event. And then, for those of you who are really accurate and were checking the documentation, I inadvertently said that the project that I was interested in out in southwest Oklahoma City was item AT, it was item AK. So those of you caught that, I apologize. Thank you all, and have a great day.
All right, Ed?
I want to express my gratitude for this act, as one of the best symbolic acts I've seen the city do. I just, I think it's so important. I was kind of on the fence about the Skydance Bridge, now I'm a big fan. I think that, I just can't overemphasize how important it means, what it means to so many people. You know, we are, it shows how far we've come. We're winning over segments of the Oklahoma City population that's been skeptical for decades, really. We've heard about interactions between the LGBT community and their police department 30 years ago, taking the banners down. This is, this is so wonderful and just amazing. And to see the vigil on Sunday night that was led by the Oklahoma City Police Department, I mean, that symbolism also means a lot. We're 12 days away from the Pride Parade. That's the biggest outdoor congregation of people in the state, and it's on Classen and 39th and Penn. 39th and Penn will have thousands and thousands and thousands of people. And first, I hope that that is our biggest Pride Parade ever. It's already the greatest parade in Oklahoma City. I hope this is the biggest. I hope everybody comes out, locks arms, and marches in solidarity. You can always count the number of elected officials on one or two hands at most, so I hope a lot of people come out. And it is, it's a symbolic act, but it's very, very important. I hope security, that we can kind of think about the security a little bit, maybe more than normal years in the next 12 days. But Oklahoma City, I think, has to be kind of a beacon of light. There's no, of all the states in America, the state legislature that has the most anti-LGBT legislation since 2014 is the state of Oklahoma. I mean, it's just a barrage of it. And it was interesting, I saw this ad by the CVB, and I guess they're running it nationally, and they were saying, it goes at the top of your website, and it says, "Oklahoma City is actually a progressive city." And I thought that was really interesting, that for the Economic Development Act, they're trying to reverse this onslaught of the New York Times editorial board talking about how the legislature is gutting the poor, the Reuters talking about how we're gutting education in favor of tax incentives for oil and gas, the Guardian writing articles about, "Is Oklahoma Trying to Become the Less, the Least Progressive State in America?" So the CVB's got this, this headwinds, and they're trying to overcome it. I think Oklahoma City can be the beacon of light to overcome that. To that end, let's, I mean, let's think about, we talked about it earlier, the idea of a human rights commission, the idea of extending employment protections, maybe public accommodations. I think there's at least five or six of us that are either in favor of it or on the fence. I mean, let's, let's talk about what's the least common denominator, what's, what could we do that may be primarily symbolic, but that's important? Maybe a human rights commission is only, it doesn't have to be like every ward, it could be like three people who are just mediators who volunteer their time so it doesn't cost anything. All your major employers in Oklahoma City, Devon, Chesapeake, Continental, OG&E, Boeing, they already have sexual orientation as part of their company guidelines, so it doesn't even apply to them. But you could, we could extend as a council, it would be a very symbolic act in this particular time, establish a human rights commission. I know we could find three people who would volunteer, they would mediate, and maybe until, we have to wait till the state legislature enacts some legislation so it would have teeth, but it would at least be something where we could be in the role of peacemakers. And so I just, I throw that out there, that maybe we, five or six of us could find the least common denominator and agree on something. Thanks.
James? All right.
We had something to put. I told you before the meeting started how much I personally appreciated the Skydance Bridge lights, and I just, I want to, I should have said it when my turn came and Ed reminded me of it. I appreciate that very much. I think that's the kind of gesture. And I know, I know you're, you and Steve are the people responsible for it, but I think it says, sends a message that we all needed to see, and I appreciate it personally.
All right, City Manager reports.
This morning, we have Shannon Entz here this morning to give us an update on the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative.
Thank you. We're going to pull up our... I'm Shannon Entz.
This is Jennifer Sylvester. She's my partner in good with SNI. SNI, as you know, the conversation started around 2010, and in 2012, you all voted on the three neighborhoods that we focus on. And here's a couple of images. The four things that we talk about a lot with SNI is collaborating with other departments and neighborhoods. We talk about visioning, commitment, and placemaking. Those are all four pillars, if you will, for SNI. These are three SNI neighborhoods. We have Classen, Tin Pin, Classen, North Highland Park, and Culberson's East Highland. You all are familiar with those. This is just some general data about all three neighborhoods. As I've kind of highlighted here, we have an increase in owner occupancy in all three neighborhoods, and that's a good sign that things are improving. These are our intended outcomes. These were developed when we met with all three neighborhoods from the beginning, and this is kind of our foundation also of where we start with when we start talking about revitalization plans for their neighborhoods. And one of the things that all of them talked about was that they wanted their neighborhoods to go from just a place to a very special place. When we developed the plans, we looked at all these documents, and we still look at them periodically just to make sure that we're still within the guidance and within some of the goals for all these different departments. We, of course, look at your own, your city council priorities, we look at Plan OKC, the Parks Master Plan, the Art Master Plan, and of course, we helped write the Five-Year Consolidated Plan for HUD. With SNI, we've looked at, we've taken a holistic approach, which you all have approved. With SNI, we talk about the physical, social, and economic investments that are important, and these are the programs that we implement in order to do that. So we have new construction of housing rehab, down payment assistance in education, sidewalks programs, everything from tree plantings to legal assistance to fair housing to business facades and public arts. One of the biggest parts of our program is the neighborhood engagement piece. That is key for SNI. In order for the programs to be successful, the neighborhoods have to be engaged, neighborhoods have to want this, and they do, and they've worked really hard at that. And of course, Neighborhood Alliance is one of our key partners in making sure the neighborhoods are aware, not only are they aware, but they know how to access city government, they know how to have successful meetings and how to apply for grants, and also look for volunteer opportunities to improve their neighborhood. This is an example of just, it looks like one project, but it's not, but this is kind of the holistic approach in action. So we have, this is, this is actually a picture of a tree planting in Classen, North Highland Park. But here you have a new tree, which of course lowers utility bills and enhances walkability and beauty. We have an arborist who's teaching the group how to properly care for a tree and plant a tree. We have partners who are there to help mentor and lead by example, and these are corporations and also city staff who volunteer. We have this brand-new, brand-new house that's been built by Posse Paseo. It's a new, affordable, energy-efficient home, and it's also wheelchair-accessible throughout the home, and that is owner-occupied home. And then we have this former vacant lot that was once, you know, very low property tax-producing property that is now fully producing property, so to speak, and we have a new sidewalk. This neighborhood got all new sidewalks, and so that also, of course, benefits this homeowner. And then probably the most important thing is that through this program alone, we had youth volunteers from high schools across Oklahoma City, not just these neighborhoods that came, and they continue every time we have a tree planting to want to volunteer with this. They get it, they love it, they want to be part of it. These are just the numbers. They don't, they don't say a lot, but they are what we utilize to report to HUD and to you all. We're very proud of them. We've built 24 homes with our partners, we've rehabbed 24 homes, and I say right now, this is between the time of 2013 to 2015. 2013 is where we really started spending money with SNI, and this goes up to the end of 2015. So 34 blocks of sidewalks. Embark has been gracious enough to work with us, and we've paid for some bus shelters in our SNI neighborhoods, and if you've noticed them, they have the nice, for example, Classen 10 Penn, big Classen 10 Penn logo on them, which is pretty great. Neighborhood signs, a new park with public art, and we've removed several hazardous trees. We've had 400 students go through STEAM, and we had more, I couldn't, I've kind of lost count when I was going through the calendar, but more than 100 neighborhood meetings. I love, I love these pictures because in that top picture, you have two Positively Paseo homes next to one another in Classen 10 Penn, and then below you have the Oklahoma City Energy, who are helping us plant trees in Classen 10 Penn last spring. Give you some quick maps of, just so you can see where we have put our thumb in each of these neighborhoods. We try real hard to at least hit almost every block now, but that's, even if, even if the, the owners don't apply for rehab or hazardous tree removal, we at least try to talk someone on that block to do something so that we can, you know, show some, some progress in each of the neighborhoods. But as you can see, there's been trees planted all over Classen 10 Penn, those big Classen 10 Penn signs throughout our neighborhood signs. We've also rehabbed several houses, and it looks like we've partnered up and built, it looks like about nine homes in there. Next. Classen, North Island Park, again, this is just going to be a visual of where we've, where we've worked in this neighborhood. Probably the most visible project now, besides sidewalks, has been the new Fremont Harn Gardens, and you'll see some pictures of that here in a minute, but it is just fantastic. If you get a chance to go over to it, it truly reflects what the neighborhood wanted, and they wanted it to reflect the Harn, Harn Homestead, which is adjacent to it, just a fence jump over, and they want to have a farm theme, so we'll see that, some pictures of that in a minute. Culberson's East Highland, same way. It's a much larger neighborhood, so we have to spread out the resources as much as we can. One thing that's not on this map is the 27 homes that we're building together, rehabbed in this neighborhood, two months ago, and it was just a fabulous event. It also doesn't map the homes that Catholic Heart Work Camp, the students from across the country that have come over to paint houses in these neighborhoods. So this is just our investment in this neighborhood, in all three neighborhoods. When we started the SNI process, what we tried to do was start out with catalyst projects, projects that were visible, so neighborhood residents could, could see that we are honest, that we're truly in there to do some good in the neighborhood. We also wanted the investors to see that we're serious, too. So many of the early-on projects were things that were very visible. We also tried to attend every meeting that we possibly could, to also reiterate our sincerity in, in improving that neighborhood. We also met with several developers, some you've heard of, some you haven't, that wanted just to drive around to see the neighborhoods, to see where we thought would be good investment locations, and we do do that regularly. So what we're getting to see now is more confidence from the private side on investing in these three neighborhoods, and in particular, Classen 10 Penn, because of its close proximity to downtown and the Plaza District, obviously, you'll see a little more investment in there. And just, you probably know this already, but just so you know, in the past few weeks, we've seen some pretty large billing permits come in for Classen 10 Penn. So next time we do this, you'll see an even greater city-to-private ratio. The average sales prices are increasing in the neighborhood, pretty steadily, so much so that in Classen, North Island Park, this next, this coming fiscal year will be our last year in Classen, North Island Park. We're beginning to see so much progress in there that it's time for us to move on. You kind of hit a threshold where, at what point do you continue to put private dollars in a neighborhood when you begin to see the incomes and the housing values and things like that increase? So we've made that decision right now. Of course, we'll have the final decision, but our plans right now are to continue to work hard this next fiscal year, and then that will be it. Now, we'll still do some things with them. Neighborhood Alliance will still work with them also, but that will be the kind of the end of our bigger investments in the neighborhood. Go ahead. Go ahead. Crime is definitely going down, especially Classen 10 Penn, while it still has our largest number of incidents of crime, crime has decreased 33% in that neighborhood, and that's pretty impressive. And Culberson's East Highland, well, they kind of fluctuate. Just in the last year, they've gone down 10% in crime, and that's a considerable measure as well. Classen, North Island Park, bless their hearts, they don't have very much crime, but they report now a lot more than they used to, so that's why you see a little bit of uptick there in the last two years, is they report now everything they see. So that's, that's good, that's, that's them being engaged and responsible. This was, we had, we did an exercise with all three neighborhoods. We went through and asked, we went to their meetings and asked them to, here are the intended outcomes that we measure, and we asked them to grade themselves more or less, assess how you think things are going in your neighborhood. And they were kind of harsh on themselves at first, they kind of, you know, scored themselves a little bit lower, and then they would, they would have a conversation about it, and they eventually came to, I think, some pretty honest answers, and some things they feel, they still feel, for example, in Classen 10 Penn, they still felt like, for example, Number 11, that they still need to do some work on removing graffiti and blight and junk cars and code violations. So in the next year, also part of this exercise, was all the neighborhoods wrote down the things they're going to work on even more in the coming year, and so that's something they're going to work on pretty heavily. They also, two of the neighborhoods talked about how they need to continue to increase awareness, number 15, about local resources. So, but as you can see, two of the neighborhoods felt like they were progressing well, and Classen, North Island Park said, "We're meeting expectations." Matter of fact, we're a point away from exceeding them, so we thought they did really well. Community collaboration, this is what I want to kind of wrap up with, was kind of give you some examples of collaborations as well as upcoming projects. This is the Fremont Harn, William Fremont Harn Gardens that opened June 4th, had a fantastic celebration a couple Saturdays ago. The, the top left photo is of their, one of their first meetings to talk about the park and vision and talk about it, and then we have now, those three other pictures are post-pictures, so, which was once a vacant lot owned by the Park, Park Department, and we really didn't know what anyone was going to ever do with it, has turned into an absolute gem, from the jungle gym to the tractor to the beautiful public art rooster that was donated, to the split-rail fence. It all has a very obvious but beautiful farm theme that matches the Harn Homestead. The STEAM program, which, as you know, is near and dear to my heart, is up and running, going well. While this, these two photos aren't from the 1315 era, these are from last Friday, I had to share them. Councilman Pettis was gracious enough to lead us in a Boom Chickaboom song, which was probably heard all over City Hall. It was fantastic. They got a great tour of City Hall. We really appreciated Laura Johnson and Zach Nash and some of the other staff that let us come through, and the kids just absolutely loved it, so we really appreciate that. And they'll be back Friday. You'll be ready Friday? Okay. They'll be back here. Eugene Field will be the school in your ward that will be here for a tour of City Hall. And matter of fact, any of you councils ever want to, want to come in and join and, you know, see, read these, meet these kids, feel free to do so. This bottom picture is Paige Bressman's tweet. She's the principal at Eugene Field, and she tweeted this yesterday of the kids doing an art project, the Arts Council, and they were building DNA, just building DNA with marshmallows and toothpicks and Twizzlers. So it's a fantastic way of merging art with science. As you can see, the reading and math scores in 2014 increased very well, and that's what we expect to see this summer as well. We will share that information as soon as we get it. Positively Paseo can't say enough good things about that organization and what they've done for our neighborhoods. These houses are in Classen 10 Penn and Classen, North Island Park, and they do a fabulous job. They're going to continue to work with this. We have seven homes planned for 2017. One of the collaborations that came to us was OU School of Architecture wanted to collaborate with us and work with our community engagement piece of SNI, and so we said, "Of course." They wanted to work in Classen 10 Penn and create a design project for their students, and they did that, they presented them. These are models for a project that some students developed. This was their finals project, and they did a fabulous job. They're going to do it again in the future. We just met, and we're going to do it some more. Here's some, some upcoming developments. So we have the Ben Sellers Project at 16th and McKinley that's broken ground. The building permit was just issued a couple days ago, and that's estimated values at $1.6 million, so that will look good on that pie chart in the future. The 10th Street Development, it's actually proposed right now, it hasn't come in front of you yet for final contracts, but we are in negotiations. That project's, that project will be valued around $18 million. Urban Neula Authority is working on the development of about 30 single-family homes in Culberson's East Highland on a site that's kind of known as the Truman Site. One of the, one of the great things that's come out of this product, even though it's taken a long time for people to come to some consensus, is that the Urban Neula Authority agreed to conduct the residential design standards for all their properties within this neighborhood. That has done a lot to build some reconciliation within the neighborhood. They have a better comfort level now that any homes that are built, if they're on O-Cure lots, will kind of fit the neighborhood design a little bit better, so that's, that's, they should be committed for that. One of the things that also came to us was Current Studios, Romeo Owens and Kelsey Carper, they're in Classen 10 Penn, but they reached out to us wanting to do murals in FD Moon over in Culberson's. So they're going to redo the cafeteria in FD Moon this summer, and with a lot of volunteers. And I believe Steve Senet has, Senet has donated funds to pay for the paint for it, so that's fabulous. And then, of course, you may have heard about the McKinley Park mural. Breaking news, the mural has been chosen, and, so I don't have a picture of that for you just yet, but Amanda Bradway and Tessa Ravenbane was chosen by the neighborhood. This was voted on at their Classen 10 Penn Festival. We're very proud of that. That will take place this fall. These are our partners, and then some. There's actually several logos we can't fit on here just yet, but we wouldn't be able to have any of our programs or do very well without these partnerships. And with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, questions for Shannon? John?
I just, I just want to thank Shannon and also the Planning Department for their hard work. We have attended many of many of many neighborhood meetings, community meetings, and thank you for hanging in there. Some of the, at the beginning, some of the community meetings were very heated, but I, I just want to say thank you for your service, for hanging in there, and I think it shows. Thank you.
And that Classen 10 Penn mural project was wonderful. They had their festival last weekend, and there were three artists that had, or three groups of artists that had proposed the murals, were all there, and the neighborhood got to vote and select the one they wanted. Festival was really well-attended, started in the morning, and went all the way to see the little rascals in the evening, and just great community spirit. Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment on Shannon's work? All right.
This is a community's work, Mayor. I don't want to correct you, but.
All right, Shannon's presentation.
This is fantastic. Thank you very much for your support.
Thanks for what you do. Anything else from City Manager reports?
No, sir.
All right. Citizens to be Heard, Joe Sarge Nelson.
Joe Sarge Nelson, wish to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to read this a little bit, then I'll, I've got some booklets coming. They look like this, in a newspaper article, they're in an envelope, so they're a little bit bulky. But anyway, good morning to you. As you all up there already know, I've been coming here for quite a while, and in that time, I've seen some good things happen and some bad as well, and things good in concept but arriving way too early. As these MAPS projects are in part, are tearing at the people's pocketbooks, and with all these tax burdens, you up there are calling them, when in truth, whomever those are getting these or bargaining table people are making the financial calls and decisions connected with the disciples of this city's purse strings, meaning the people's money. Those at those tables are falling short in the figures calculated for the finances of the programs called a MAPS project as they should be. So far, every MAPS project has fallen short of the finance needed to make it complete. All we taxpayers are really doing is agreeing on a plan that's been picked and sold to us, when in fact, the taxpayers are really only paying off the earlier MAPS projects that was well under-calculated, and then with what's left applies to what's coming up next on the taxpayers' turntable. And this council has got, you got to understand, this financing has got to stop. So far, the calculations are way out of proportion. It's time for telling the people the truth, to allow the tables to try to be, arrive at the real cost, so that the people, when they vote on them, they know what's going on when it's been presented to the people, and the real facts that are at least within reason with the real cost of each project. Better yet, making sure that taxpayers' dollars are safe in support of sticky situations of this way. But the reason, one of the reasons I'm here is some, one of the, two of the projects especially I'm, I'm really particular with is the Wellness Centers. This booklet came out 2004. There was a dinner held at the Weston Hotel that I felt at the time when the Trauma Center was in deep financial trouble. I put this booklet together, and an article came out, it's not the Sentinel, man, but it was the Mid-City Advocate, there's a full page on page four, and tells you the fight to survive the Trauma Center. Our Trauma Center is considered one of the best in the world, and I say that very specifically. I know Roxy Albright, I know Gordon Decker real well, he had contacted me, we put it together, and we brought the legislature and the medical profession together, and we had it at the Weston Hotel, now the Sheridan, and the dinner was there, and between the two, they said they got tired of emailing each other, caucking each other on the phone, and finally coming together face to face. They came up with the program, they used my program, the state had one in process, and we put them together. Trauma Center has not had a dime's worth of trouble since, and I thought I would bring that to you because the police department uses that area a lot for emergency calls, as well as deacons and some others. But anyway, to make a long story short, I'm going to give you all these packets before I call it a day. If you don't mind, let me take one second and pass them out. They have your names.
You're about out of time. Anything else you want to say?
Can I still pass them out to you, though?
Yeah, that's fine. All right, thank you. And we have executive session. We'll be back.